And our broadcast and it'll take a moment, but I'll look to our attendees list. And with that, I turn over to the chair.
Thanks, Andy. This is the planning board meeting of the 15th of October 2025. We have a short agenda tonight. It's general business. We'll start with roll call. Brian Balcom. Not here.
Brian is in the attendees. I'm just migrating to a panelist. Brian, you're with us? Yes?
Sorry if you call my name. I'm here now.
Do we hear from Brian?
Brian, you'll have to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, great. Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to promote you as well. So.
Right. Jen Bluestein. Not here. Alden Clark.
Here.
Charlie Palmasano.
Here.
Just here. Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
Jack LeCaire.
Jack's here.
Matt Hefron.
Here.
Here, and I am here. So everyone except for for Jen Bluestein. On the agenda tonight, just just general business related to Plaza Landings. You'll all recall that we sent a letter a few weeks ago related to some of the earlier plans on the project that contained, I think, much more comprehensive comments related to the overall project on a number of different subjects. We have received an updated site plan from Bowler Engineering, which which begins to address some of the conditions around the building, particularly on the north and the west side. And there's also information from Viness related to the intersection at Low Street and improvements that have been proposed there. So the subject of tonight's meeting is is to basically put together our response to to that limited submission of of updates. We have put together a draft, which I think you all have had a chance to look at. And the goal would be to try to get agreement tonight on on the content of that letter. So it can be put in final format and signed and sent as quickly as we can get it off. I think the the next discussion with the ZBA, Andy, is on the 28th, the next meeting.
That's correct. They'll also have some discussion of both traffic and parking, which overlaps with some of this site plan discussion, I think, of yours, as well as also could be getting some comments from the urban design architect who's looking at that aspect of the project. So some of those comments are things you may want to look to on the open gov filing for the project in the coming days after this meeting. But in advance of the meeting on the 28th where the ZPA meets next. And then we expect, of course, that they'll continue the hearing once again into November. So.
Yeah. Okay. Could we start, Andy, with with just you walking us through the the Bowler Engineering Plan? And then we could look at the intersection improvements as well?
Yeah, I mean, just then I'm happy to kind of pan around or, you know, clarify further. But just to sort of summarize briefly, the substantive changes that were made. We didn't get a whole drawing set from from the team this time. I think it was probably due to the turnaround time. But they were trying to make some modifications to address a variety of comments they had gotten. You know, I think from partly from Planning Board, partly from Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, partly from TC, the peer review consultant. And so they were in essence, trying to revise the plans to address all those concerns. And we can all discuss, you know, the degree to which we think it is improved or, you know, perfected, so to speak, on that spectrum. But they they made some tweaks to primarily what's happening, not the building, you know, surrounds so much, except for say, this walkway here is a little wider, but more so around the driveway and the traffic islands and whatnot. So for instance, as we walk, there's it's basically this part of the plan here where we really see adjustments. There's also, I'll show you that aerial photograph in a second of Low Street. But primarily what we see is around the building on the drive aisles. They sort of closed off this piece here, you know, trying to redirect traffic and not have it in line with the queuing that might be happening here. There has been discussion about the sort of one way versus two way versus some sort of limit, you know, limited, you know, spectrum of that through this entrance, you know, versus the queuing, you know, that that might cause if people are always coming out, taking a left. So so there's been discussion about how these garage doors work on both sides because of that. But then there's also the drive aisle just heading up, not so much, you know, similar capture of things happening here so much, but the limit of work sort of drawn up here on the drive aisle. And then here, there's been sort of a bump out of curbing, some adjustments to the sort of island pieces here, and attempt to sort of put some islands and surrounds here. And so this is the only drawing sheet we have, I think, from the last set to to work with off of this. But primarily what we see in this area on the Shaw's side uphill is parking against the building or perpendicular to the building here against this walkway, which I think in this section has been widened. So that's primarily what you're seeing there. And then it extends a little bit further down. The parking extends here. That is primarily what we see on the site plan itself. And then just briefly, I'll mention on Low Street in the aerial photograph, just of that section of the street, the traffic consultant had provided a drawing and just honing in on this section here. It's basically with the drive section here, they're talking about the possibility of a left hand left hand turn here. Not necessarily a full signal, but rather a RRFB, which is like the Merson type. We think of that sort of crossing there flashes, you know, only when there's a pedestrian on it. We're starting to see more usage of those, which is a sort of a lower grade, but focused on pedestrians in the most limited sense. And then there's the Hawk style signal, which is the one down on Route One that was put in by Mastio Timos recently on the bike path connection. So if you think of that one with a full stop happening, the larger mast arms essentially for what's happening there. But essentially giving making a full traffic control for that section, you know, as opposed to, you know, just when the pedestrians on it have having it flash essentially. And those neither one of those would address directly what's happening with this or this per se. So it's it's these two options are focused on that. There is in the spectrum, the discussion of the pros and cons of and reasonableness of having a trap full traffic signal for the intersection. So as you think about pedestrians and traffic, both of those things come into play here and of course throughout the site. So those are the things that were discussed, and this is most recently what was put forward for this intersection down here as a possible improvement. And what they essentially said was we would do the RRFB, the the Merson style crossing. Or if the board feels appropriate or necessary, we will upgrade it, you know, you know, essentially to the to the Hawk style, you know, the the full red stops for this piece here. There hasn't been a migration of discussion further than these improvements thus far, but there's been discussion about focusing back on that issue on the 28th. So that apologies for the length, but that's in summary what what happened and the plan since you last saw them.
I'll let Rick address the intersection, but I mean, in terms of, you know, some of the comments we we have put together. You know, I put together a couple of paragraphs that that basically focused on this change on the north side of the building. Our initial comments, if you all remember, suggested that that both the entry drive aisle off of Low Street and and this circulation that runs on the north side of the building, that that those have more definition with actually sidewalks and curbs on on both sides. I'm I'm not surprised that that we're not seeing the sidewalks on on the other side of either one of these streets. But you know that we haven't foreclosed that possibility in the future. So I'm not pushing too hard on that. But I did. I did have a reaction to to the perpendicular parking that has been located on the north side of the building. If you read the notes on the drawings, there's there's a portion of that, I think. It's either six or eight. I think it's eight spaces at the far right hand end. Those are actually retail parking spaces. The other spaces, they're talking about, you know, visitor parking for residential plus moving the accessible parking spaces over so that they're more adjacent to the building. In just given again, the goal that, you know, long term, you know, these these areas of circulation, which which are currently part of a parking lot may at some point feel more like streets if this gets developed in in more of a kind of mixed use individual block structure. If that were to happen, and and I think we need to kind of consider that as a reasonable possibility. Perpendicular parking is is very unusual in in a normal street environment, at least in my experience. And and part of the reason for that is it's inherently unsafe because you're backing out into traffic. And, you know, you you lack visibility. It's it's, you know, you hear the same thing in terms of larger parking lots. But you're in in that case, you're 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 kind of, you know, locked into that kind of configuration. But here where there is an option, it it seems like, number one, to me, it seems like there's an awful lot of parking that that has shown up immediately adjacent to the building. And part of it is retail parking, which, you know, we can, we can talk about as well. But the the language I I put together, and I'm interested in all of your thoughts on this, is that if you converted this parking to parallel parking, though obviously there'd be fewer parking spaces along the the curb along immediately adjacent to the building. But if all of that parking were designated as as parking for residential for for visitors plus plus accessible parking. If you did that, the islands that that are drawn in on the on the north side of this circulation, they could be pulled down at least the width of one parking space. And you could add 10 parking spaces back to the larger parking field. And it would be a clear delineation between retail parking, which would be in the large parking field and and parking related to residential, which would be parallel parking immediately adjacent to the building. And and that, to me, is just a much clearer diagram and and much more typical of urban streets than than what has been drawn here. I will say that that accessible parking in a in a parallel configuration is is kind of undefined in terms of the mass accessibility code, in terms of ADA. That they tend to focus on on perpendicular parking diagrams or that, you know, kind of diagonal parking diagrams. But but there are examples around that show five feet of circulation around an accessible parallel parking space that would allow wheelchair access without getting involved with with the curb. So it's it's possible to do all of that here, and I would leave it up to the design teams to kind of decide which way they want to go in terms of the configuration of accessible parking. But I think separating retail parking in a conventional large parking field and and residential convenience parking for visitors and and for accessible parking as a parallel parking configuration immediately adjacent to the building just made made sense to me. So that that's basically the language that that we put together related to that. So should maybe we should talk about that first, and then we can we can go down to the the intersection discussion. So does anybody have any any other comments or or thoughts about that?
Bob, I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's a I I hadn't I hadn't thought of it. And I I think you can't underestimate how important that might be. So I I fully support it.
I agree that that corridor, if left as as it stands or presented, I I don't know about you guys, but I always drive right along there to get to the retail and the and Shaw's. It's like my access area. So I do agree it would be, you know, used as a ingress and egress frequently.
Right. It's it's not a future thing even. It's it's almost there already. So I agree.
I mean, it seems to me we haven't really gotten into this yet. But but if we start talking about, you know, in the next few months, this this block structure for for the broader area. I mean, the 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 place to start is the the current pattern of circulation that's there. So to me, the the Low Street drive aisle, the entrance is is a logical street that could cut all the way through to Story Avenue. And this drive aisle to to the north of the building, you could imagine that that could extend across the Low Street entrance aisle and become a street that runs into the the where the West Retail and that parking lot is. And just, you know, begin to create some separation and block structure on on that side of the entrance. So, you know, it may not end up that way, but it just seems like there's there's a logic to that right now, which would mean what we're talking about would end up feeling more like a street. And you could even imagine that in a kind of full build out configuration, there there might be some pad site, one story retail buildings that are immediately opposite Plaza Landings on the other side of that street that that form a kind of retail edge on on that side. And, you know, some of that parking field, if it's possible. And I don't know how much of that is committed to Shaw's. But but it it may be possible to take a portion of that and create some smaller single story pad site retail buildings that that begin to give us the density that we're looking for.
Everyone's had a chance to read Bob's draft, right? So we have that in mind already.
Yeah, and I'd just say, you know, I appreciate the logic. I follow it. And, you know, the timing is now, but we don't say anything now, and it gets built. And it's a you really don't have a say after that. So I think it's a good timing and and good logic.
Yep, I just was really surprised at the amount of parking that the that showed up in this in this update. And and I don't know. I don't know how they control that really. Because it it with that amount of parking, I mean, I I don't know that you'd get people parking there related to the retail or not. But there's just, there seems like there's an awful lot of parking there with, you know, this perpendicular configuration. And, you know, it kind of blurs the line between the parking lot and and the residential parking. So I that's that's where I was headed with that.
Yeah, Bob, I think that was actually born out of the need to lessen the amount of run that crosswalk has at the northwest corner. TEC had a big problem initially with the length of that. They said that crosswalk was actually longer than the cross across Low Street. And that that it was just inherently dangerous. So I think that the bump out actually is what grew that parking area was the need to bring that bump out out closer to and and actually narrow that intersection and make that crosswalk. Basically, that crosswalk is now half the size of the original.
I think Bob is suggesting that there might be another way of doing that that does the still the same there at that intersection there, for instance, but doesn't necessarily put all the parking against the building. It's that sort of like streetscape, you know.
Two way circulation that's that's drawn there, and it just it just moves to the south closer to the residential building by, you know, eight to 10 feet, something like that. The the crosswalk dimension remains exactly as they have it drawn. It's just it's just pushed a little bit further to the south. And you're picking up more parking spaces in the larger parking field. So I think the net loss, I I counted it up, the net loss is is less than 10 parking spaces. Once you add those 10 back in on the other side over what they have drawn. So it's not, it's not a a significant change from what they have.
Do we know if they're trying to keep that number of parking spaces based on the number of parking spaces that are under the building? Do they need additional ones? I I don't have a feel for that.
My recollection is there's this is equivalent or almost identical to the number that was previously here for the residence side. I think it's just, and it might be a factor here, but, you know, preserving as many spaces here in this location for the commercial uses elsewhere, so to speak, might be more of a factor sort of here than the residential spaces themselves. I think my recollection is that this isn't really changing that number of total spaces for the residents, so to speak. But but we see here along that row, for instance, some of them are retail spaces. But if if you want, we can dig further into the parking tables and just verify the numbers that the pre and post from the prior plan. Again, most of the parking is under the building, of course. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I fully support converting the perpendicular spaces to parallel spaces. And that you you'll have probably fewer than half as many spaces, but they will be all dedicated to the residential use. And then you'll add back the commercial spaces on the north side of the of the travel aisle. So I think that makes a lot of sense to do it that way, rather than to have some spaces budding up to the building that aren't available to the building.
Those those spaces are right adjacent to the residential units too.
Right.
The greatest juxtaposition of things. Okay, well, that that's that's kind of where where that went in in terms of the the draft. So there's a paragraph that kind of describes everything we just talked about. I I didn't say anything about the changes to the to the the west side of the entrance drive. Because that's kind of, to me, that's kind of non controversial. And and I didn't say anything about the one way parking entrance either. I don't know if anyone feels we should address either one of those things or not, we can. If if you feel it's important to do that.
My only ongoing concern is the, you know, ingress and egress from Low Street to the what west side of it of the of the building. I just still feel, I was just there the other day, I was kind of analyzing it as I was trying to come out of that, you know, parking area. And it's it's there's a lot of traffic there. There's just a lot of traffic. And I don't know if we have any say in in readdressing a a light cycle, is that what you call it? Versus the Hawk system or whatever is that you have. The Hawk system isn't bad down by the Rotary, by the way. And it does make you stop and address the pedestrians, but it still doesn't address turning left into the plaza. And and coming out is is just a bear. I I just feel I know nothing about traffic studies or things like that. But I can tell you, if common sense dictates that slowing the traffic down there will help alleviate the burden further up as you get towards Story Ave. And and it's not like there isn't, you know, retail shops, Giuseppe's, CVS, Richdale's. Everything tends to, you know, domino up into that area. So I I again, have no idea what influence we have over this, but I'm telling you, I believe that a light cycle would work well there.
I tend to agree with you on that one.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up.
Oh, oh, sorry, Rick. Did I take? Let me just mute myself.
It's a perfect segue.
Are you ready to move on?
Sure. Unless anyone has any other comments about about, you know, what's shown in the Bowler Engineering drawing, I think we can move on to this intersection because that that's where the real heat is, I think.
Okay, so on the second page of the the second and third page of the draft letter, I put some comments together about this, their proposal here. And then after later this afternoon, I thought about it some more, and I have some some more thinking about that. But let's go back to the picture, and we can just go through the what. And if you go through the back to the over the aerial.
Sorry, did you want the overall or?
That's what I want to see, just like that. So what happens here, there's a there's a bunch of things that happen here. First of all, from a they're proposing the the left turn lane into the plaza. And my concern about that is pretty much just what Charlie said, which is that without a signal and you have a left turn lane, then that allows the through traffic to keep going through all the time. And so the people who are trying to come out of Port Plaza turning left have even fewer gaps than they do today because it's just continuous traffic going through. And it's, I think, also perhaps sometimes harder to see if somebody's coming behind a row of cars that are stopped to turn left. So I think a left turn lane without a signal is is definitely a problem. And I'm not even sure that the left turn lane is, well, I I'm sure my feeling is the left turn lane isn't called for by the development. If if it's needed, it's for an existing situation, an existing condition. Because as they pointed out, I think they said the peak time for left turn lanes, the development is going to add one left turning vehicle every two and a half, two and a half minutes or some some crazy number like that. So it wasn't really going to be a big increase. So that's one concern I had. Another concern was the proposal for an RFB. And, you know, we've seen particularly on High Street that cars frequently just go through the RFBs. They go through it at the at the driveway to the to the senior community center at at night and even more so in the daytime. And they go through it at Toppen's Lane. So it's it's not a great solution for safety for pedestrians. And then on top of that, what they're doing here, it's hard to see in this plan, but they're taking a five foot shoulder on the right hand side of the plan and transitioning it to a two foot shoulder, which means that all the bicyclists, any bicyclist who's there, has to get into the traffic lane rather than stay in a in a separate area. So and that's caused by creating that center island. It basically forces the lanes apart and toward the curb. So my feeling is this isn't great for vehicle traffic. It's not particularly safe for pedestrians, and it is very unsafe for bicyclists. So what I had drafted was were three points. One, and if we can go now to the to the what you were just about to show, Andy, that the email that I sent earlier earlier today. So this is about number two is about the the proposal for a left turn lane. And what I'm suggesting we say is this change is recommended based on existing conditions rather than on traffic generated by the proposed development and does not address existing and future left turns out of Port Plaza. Indeed, providing a left turn lane for vehicles turning into the plaza may reduce the safety of the left turn movement from the plaza by facilitating a more continuous through movement and thereby reducing gaps in the flow of traffic. Installation of a traffic signal at this location would better address safety for all vehicle movements as well as for non motorists. So that's that's one item that has to do with the the left turn lane and and why I think that's not a good idea. The second thing was about the the RFB is proposed with the raised median aisle. And I've said in my, we can leave this up here. But in the draft that went out today, I said, experience in Newburyport has shown that RRFBs can be unsafe for pedestrians, except in specific contexts and accompanied by physical traffic calming measures. Vehicles frequently ignore the RRFBs on High Street, Toppen's Lane, and at the senior community center driveway. These issues can be expected to be worse on a busy commercial corridor with a higher speed limit. A greater level of pedestrian accommodation than an RRFB is necessary on Low Street, whether that be a pedestrian hybrid beacon, that's a Hawk beacon, or a fully signalized intersection. And then the last sentence would be what's shown here. Hawk beacons at the rail trail crossing on State Street and Route One in Newburyport and on Route 110 in Salisbury have proven to offer a higher level of safety for pedestrians and bicyclists in similar high traffic locations. So that was the the second recommendation. And we could talk about those two and then go on to the third one afterwards. Anybody have any comments on these two?
Bob, if I could just interject.
Sure.
Just quickly, I just wanted to note with respect to Rick, where you have the reference to this change is recommended based on existing conditions rather than on traffic generated by the proposed development. I I call that out more for for others because, you know, you you know, a lot of the background here, I just call it out just to make sure everybody's aware. Part of the discussion thus far about the traffic signal, signalization, or the need for something of that level has been partly in the context of it, not necessarily that it doesn't need it. The traffic analysis, essentially just boiling it all down, hasn't necessarily. Hasn't necessarily said it doesn't need it. And what it said in part is uh, it might need it, but it's largely generated or the need for it is largely associated with the commercial uses that are already there, essentially in existing conditions. Um, and in part, the argument here being that because the project itself, the forty B, which is part of the sort of legal structure of. Forty B permitting and sort of the analysis of what's reasonable to, you know, uh, do as mitigation. Um, this is being framed in part or analyzed under this rubric that sort of assumes, well. Um, i- if the product itself isn't generating it, it's a preexisting condition. Um, that maybe it's not reasonable to call for it here, even though we might all look at the intersection and say that's necessary based on what we see already today, never mind additional traffic or movements. So it's a little bit of an oddity. I just want to call out call out for folks' attention because some of the um. Um, there's two legal letters, I think, communications from the applicant here that speak to this, but part of it is is embedded in those legal. Uh, letters of opinion about, you know, what is reasonable or not reasonable to uh, do here. Part of that goes to this assumption about what the developer. Uh, may do or not do here. Uh, so I just wanted to call that piece out here only because from. Um, for from their perspective, there there's partly a presentation that, well, if the product itself, the housing isn't generating this, it's an existing condition. Even if it may warrant it, so to speak, um, that it may not be still still reasonable to expect it in as an association with this development or building. Um, I don't necessarily say I agree with that, you know, position, but that's just one of the, I just want to call for folks to understand how that's being framed, so.
So. How much credence do we give to this traffic study? Because it seems to me that, you know, we already have the issue and and we're adding cars. So I I don't know. I don't I don't know if I have. Believe it has that much credibility. And I I understand the legal component of it that, you know, the forty B, they can do this, they can build this building without our recommendations, right? Essentially is what you're saying. Um, they could just go forward and, you know, put up pretty much whatever they want. Is that about right?
No, I wouldn't say that. Um, I'm not keen on the way that the the permitting structure works here, the sort of loose end, it sort of leaves. Um, room for additional case law and debate over some of these type of particulars. Um, but it does weaken that, you know, level of degree of control that you might normally have with a site plan approval process, you know, or a special permit, you know, plan review that you're doing here. Yes, it does weaken that. I don't want to say it takes away all that uh, control, but for instance, the. Um, extent to which the the project is is bounded by a red boundary on that plan or. Um, whether or not further improvements that, you know, need to be mitigated around the site or within the the applicant's property. Um, whether those things can come into play or not is unfortunately a factor with forty B. It sort of reduces, it does reduce the level or degree. Um, of control the municipality has in in looking at those things. So I don't want to say. Um, that it completely takes it away, but it it does reduce that. Um, that uh, it puts a little bit more burden on the municipality to have a discussion about, you know, what's reasonable there rather than. Normally where you're in the situation, the applicant has to present to you why something meets your standards. Here, um, the applicant presents and says, I want waivers from these things and then. Um, has explains why they might need them. You'd have the discussion of the ZBA, of course, I'm talking about here. Um, but there's there's generally a premise that, you know. Um, the board is then put in a position of having to give some rationale why something can't be waived or must be, you know, imposed or, you know, some some port, you know, so forth. Um, and that's unfortunately the part of the statute that I'm not keen on because it takes away some of our ability to control proper urban design locally, things like that, so.
Right. What's that?
I I agree with you on this, that, you know, there's there's an existing condition right now, which uh. Has a degree of of chaos at at this intersection. And that's based upon an empty parking lot for Kmart and and an empty building there. And. It's hard for me to imagine that you can add over two hundred cars to that system. On a daily basis and 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 argue that there's no impact at all. And and I would say that. In addition to those cars and and this has come up in a couple of discussions in previous meetings with a ZBA. There there are additional pedestrians and there are additional bicycles. So, you know, there is an increase in activity that that will happen uh, around this intersection uh, in a variety of forms. Uh, and it's just, it's hard for me. And I've I've read the, I've seen the traffic reports and and I understand the comments about there's hardly any impact. It's hard for me to sort of imagine that there's no impact when you're adding two hundred cars. That move in and out of there at at peak times during the day. I I don't know. I'm not a traffic engineer either, but it just logic kind of escapes me related to that, uh, that that there's no impact. It it seems.
Uh, we're going to be adding down the road where Hodges is potentially. Um, additional housing there as well. So why not address this now? And I do feel as though Rick's, you know, take on this is spot on. So I I you guys know me well enough that I remain quiet a lot, but I'm fairly entrenched on this. Uh, because I, again, we we drive, you guys all drive the road. You know how it's going to be. And I feel like it it needs to be addressed. I feel like it's the most critical component of this development.
So I guess my my thought on that, Charlie, just listening to you and and the discussion we had earlier. You know, we don't have to be shy in our point of view. You know, we're planners, right? We have a right to put all our heads together and make a recommendation that we believe is good for the community. Now, to your point, Andy, that may. Go into another system and another discussion and the ZBA is in the. The seat to actually decide whether they want to make a hard recommendation and have it either stand the test of time or not. But I think from our standpoint, I'd almost feel remiss if we didn't make those recommendations. Right? Because it's obvious to me, it's obvious to you, I've come in and out of there and sometimes, you know, you really got to step on it. It's not. It's not a trivial intersection. There's people coming down the hill and they and if they're going someplace to Route one. They're not thinking of stopping at any retail. They're just throughway. The other thing is it's at commuting time, you know, if if half the people leave the residence and get on to commuter traffic. And there's commuter traffic on Low Z, Low Street anyways, ice, there's the dilemma, you know, there's just the dilemma. So my vote would be to. Put it on and say, this is what we think and why, and then let the chips fall where they may.
And are we phrasing it that way because of the traffic study rather? I would I would say. In our view, we should take that out, not not based on existing conditions, but I think they're right. That is going to be an increase. You know, as you were saying, it's going to be an increase, it's going to be an impact. So I agree. I think we should.
Um, wish for that.
Hey, we just offer that you might, um, to Bob's earlier point, it might be good to. Or good to at least recognize the focus on the pedestrian bicycle activity as being potentially different in nature. Um, only because if you look at the peer review of the traffic analysis, I think there might be some assumptions there that. The numbers for traffic and the proportion of existing versus proposed is a reasonable analysis that the um, developer has, you know, team has put forward. So if there's already sort of consensus or agreement that the traffic for vehicles is, you know. Analyzed sufficiently, let's say, or right, or isn't a proportional impact of whatever order of magnitude. Um, it it perhaps is a different discussion here. Um, you know, to Bob's earlier point that um, that, you know, that, and I think Rick had mentioned in our earlier planning board meeting, but it's. You know, characteristically different, perhaps, you know, than the existing conditions there, right? It generates more pedestrian traffic there. I'm actually, you know. Um, I have difficulty here because I keep in my mind envisioning a future roundabout here, you know, single lane, roundabout, you know, and so forth. That's why. I keep trying to, you know, see whether that would sort of work here. Um, but at the end of the day, um, we think that pedestrian bicycle piece might be important to emphasize in some way only because. There has been, um, again, like I said, this assumption that, well, the the traffic that's commercial is what's generating it, maybe not the new housing development itself and. Um, and maybe the vehicles preimposed is sort of, we've already sort of analyzed that to death. And now we're, what is the thing we're talking about that's different here? It's the bicycles and the pedestrians perhaps, so.
I think Rick ma- made an interesting point earlier about, you know, when you're talking about the left turn lanes. Uh, about, you know, if you're going to do a left turn lane, you you it really sort of suggests that there be a signal there. And, you know, I'm sitting here trying to think of an intersection where there's a left turn lane and there isn't a signal. And and off the top of my head, I can't, I can't think of one, maybe you all can, but. Usu- usually if if you pull into a left hand turn lane and you're waiting to turn, there's 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 a signal with a green arrow or there's, you know, there's. It's a signalized intersection.
I got the perfect example for you. In fact, I was going to bring it up tonight. At the bottom of Green Street, right past the police station. There's not a left hand signal there. So it's war of the worlds trying to get out of there.
That that should be fixed as well.
I I want to fix it, honest to God.
No, nobody that lives here takes a left out of there.
Right, right, right. You you avoid it.
One of the examples, actually, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is Story Avenue at Noble Street. I believe there's a left turn pocket there and no signal.
Yeah, yeah.
Bottom of Summer Street, but they're actively working to signalize that through the state, but that's still a few years out.
Yeah.
But um, but so. Yeah, I I think ideally, um. We really, we should have, we should be talking about as planners, we should be talking about signalization uh, here. I mean, Andy mentioned a roundabout. I think we lost a huge opportunity when we didn't do something in the nature of a roundabout at the intersection of Story Avenue and Low Street because that would have. Um, made that so much, it's such a mess right now with.
Yeah.
We have to do the phasing between Woodman Way and Low Street and.
Yeah.
And everything, so and there's so much room there, um, so much more room than there is here. Um, could we go to the the third page, Andy, of the of the letter and just because that's where we were, where there's a summation of a recommendation and.
Uh, the the draft letter that was sent out.
Right, yeah, because if we want to change it, that's where we should change it in that in that last big paragraph. Um, so saying that in summary, we request that the concept for Low Street at the Plaza entrance be modified to preserve existing shoulder widths for bicyclists. And upgrade the pedestrian crossing improvements to at least a pedestrian hybrid beacon, if not full signalization at the intersection. If it's deemed necessary to provide the left turn lane, it should be done by expanding. The roadway cross section to the north rather than by taking away existing shoulder width that is currently used by bicyclists. In the long term, we hope that the city will work toward establishing continuous bike lanes. Along the length of those street, but we recognize that is beyond the scope of this project. So we could make this this paragraph stronger if that's if that's where you. You know, if you feel like. Rather than say, go for a Hawk signal, if not for full signalization. We could change it around and say, we we recommend that the intersection be signalized. If that's not possible, the backup would be a Hawk signal. You know what I'm saying? It's a it's a difference in priority, so. Um, that's. Th- this is kind of the key paragraph, I guess, that after discussing everything.
I'd be open to that. You know, I would be as well.
That makes sense.
Has there been any any comment from any of the traffic consultants about a negative impact of a traffic signal here?
Yeah, there's been some comments about this and actually I'm glad you asked. At the next meeting, we're expecting. Um, both traffic consultants might be doing this, but um, T C maybe have sort of a slide and um, presentation, sort of a table. Summarizing briefly the sort of pros and cons, considerations for signalization versus RFB versus Hawk. So um. The to that um, very point, the traffic consultant is part of the peer review. Um, in responding and saying, I think initially that he thought perhaps signalization might make sense here on the spectrum. Um, was also including comments that, you know, there are some cons to having a signal, including queuing, additional queuing that might happen depending on, you know, different things. So um, there was a recognition that queuing might be a factor that the community might want to consider in addition to anything else. Um, but other than that, we're expecting more discussion on the pros and cons from the traffic consultant. Uh, the peer review consultant, and I'm sure the applicant's uh, traffic consultant as well at the meeting on the twenty eighth.
Are you talking about the queuing there? Is that really the backup towards Story Ave?
Um, yeah, I think what what he's really primarily referring to is where people are heading westbound on Low Street and they're coming up that hill, you know, towards Story Ave and that the idea that. The queuing there is going to continue past this driveway intersection essentially or um, that, you know, there'd be sort of like cars backing up with each other. Um, you know, because of everything coming together right at that point. And yeah, that that low street section becoming more like a longer like train of cars, but.
I think that could be alleviated by just having a short left hand signal and keeping the right hand traffic going. But again, what do I know?
It sounded like cost was a driving factor. They estimated it between one million to one point two, just to add that signal and then the city would be responsible for its upkeep moving forward. The developer did not sound like they wanted to incur. Much of that cost, if any. Um, obviously that's to be determined, but the the fact that they're. Offering seventy five thousand dollars total. Towards traffic improvements doesn't sound like they're going to get anywhere close to the one million needed for the signal, so that will be a bone of contention.
I mean, their their point of view is, and you know, it's what their traffic consultant is saying is that they they have very little impact on the traffic there. Uh, beyond the existing condition, therefore.
No need.
The idea that they're creating a situation that requires a signal is, you know.
Case for the traffic consultant?
There's.
Applicant.
They have the the applicant has a traffic consultant. That's that's Vanessa, correct?
Correct, and they have a peer of the traffic, just like you do for. So T C is the peer review here.
So there's a little bit of objectivity.
The applicant is responsible for the G E C as well.
Correct, correct, yeah.
I I think earlier I was starting to hear you guys. Provide a framework for an argument here. It's not just the numbers. It's a change in pattern. It's an increase in pedestrians. I don't think there's some subjectivity here. And it's there's some objective. Increased impact here by the pedestrians that will be in this area. So I don't think it has to fall just to the numbers. There's a qualitative component here. I also, I don't really feel comfortable endorsing a Hawk in any scenario with a left turn lane. I I just don't feel like, it doesn't work well when we have only two lane traffic with no turn lanes. This would be even worse. I I I wouldn't even necessarily feel comfortable. Having it as a backup, frankly. I don't know that I even want to endorse that, so. You know, I was thinking also, Charlie, you mentioned uh, Green Street. What makes that different from a pedestrian standpoint? Not from a car. It's kind of. Uh, Wild West for cars. But what makes it safe for pedestrians is there is at least a full red cycle, right? So that I don't know if that'd be an option, you know, maybe not a full. That's some kind of, I don't know what that's even called, that kind of intersection, but. You need to make it safe for pedestrians. That's the number one priority here. There's there's, you can't put a price. On i- if someone gets killed there, you just can't put a price on that.
So Jamie, are you are you uh, thinking? Because I think you're right. That you, when you say combining the Hawk with the left turn, you're talking about the left turn out of the Plaza, right?
Or either one, uh, more Low Street, frankly, because that's where the. It would, I heard you describing it, you know, how you're right, with the left turn lane, you'll have people queue to turn left. But everyone on the right turn, that's what less like, that's like people passing on the shoulder on steroids. They'll just. Blast through there. That's that'll be the the most dangerous Hawk in town.
Yeah, I was I was thinking that a Hawk would be better than the RFB. Uh, and I I'm not really fully convinced that a a left turn lane is good anyway, so.
Right, it'd be better to slow, like calm the traffic by slowing it down and make them wait.
Yeah, yeah, I I I think if you had, if you didn't have a left turn lane, it'd be safer. It'd be safer for pedestrians crossing and would also be better for cars leaving Port Plaza trying to turn left. Because there would be more more gaps, but.
Question for Andy. Andy, you mentioned a roundabout and I had discussed it a few meetings back. Uh, has that come up at all in the conversations? Because I haven't heard of any.
No, and to be fair, that may be unique to me. I don't know, but um, but I think, you know, there's there's something to be said in my view for sort of simplicity and. You know, learning from, you know, things that happened in Europe long before America had suburban sprawl, so. I'm not, you know, I hesitate with the idea of like equipment, signalization and whatnot, when you, there's something that could be natural with flow and. For both pedestrians and vehicles, but at the same time, um, be, you know, relatively safe for all the things we can sort of walk through. So for that reason, I keep looking at this and wondering whether or not a roundabout, you know, i- in this area, I can sort of imagine that with something here. You know, whatever happens long term with this block set up and, you know, future building frontages along the streetscape and so forth. Um, maybe something happened here across the street and to me, arriving in a sort of urban area, you know, I wonder, I sort of imagine this sort of brick, you know. Roundabout circle thing in here and a one lane going around and I realize there's other factors and that may be sort of the wrong thing here, but. Uh, it has not come up that, um, it just in my mind keeps coming up as a potential uh, option that could be beneficial long term here, so.
Should we include it as an option in our in our report? I mean, I.
That's up to all of you. I mean, it it would be a new thing thrown in the mix. I don't care myself because I care more or less about the long term, you know, results. But that's something for you guys to decide.
Well, what's the cost, Andy, for something like that? I mean, I like the idea, but just, I would imagine that's way more than a million dollars.
I I don't know the cost differential there. I think part of the problem with the signalization is all the equipment and and all that kind of stuff, um. You know, but yeah, it it does involve, you know, curb lines and adjustments in more places sort of in here, so there's a cost to that and. Um, that's all, you know, whether or not it's the developer now or the city long term, I just, all I'm saying, I guess, is I look at this and wonder whether that might be. A desirable sort of setup here in essence, you know, I was. You know, I was imagining almost long-term having a pedestrian crossing here too. You know, there's maybe, you know, if there's housing or something along the streetscape here, this is creating, you know, you're arriving somewhere and you're slowing down and you're recognizing it as a walkable, bikeable place, so to speak. So again, I, I don't, wouldn't suggest like necessarily throwing something new in the mix, so to speak. But it's just something that I contemplate for this particular.
I think, I think there's also potential of, of a, a taking. You would have to potentially take some land.
Correct. Yeah, I don't know the width. I imagine here that's a factor they've already looked at in terms of the right-of-way width that's available, so.
When you think about it, the, the, the design for the roundabout at Three Roads just barely fits within that huge open area. And that's a, that's a roundabout the size of the one at the Chain Bridge. So it's a small roundabout, just barely fits within there. I think there's a lot more real estate at, at Three Roads than there is here. So I think you'd really have to dig into properties on both sides of the street to get it.
Yeah, and it hasn't been suggested by the traffic consultant. So unless you guys feel for some reason you want to throw it in the mix, you know, I was assuming everybody's still talking about the spectrum of signalization to Hawk to RFB, so.
I think the roundabout should be inside the plaza.
There are examples of that, yeah.
I know.
I actually love roundabouts, but I don't, I think this may be the one instance where I don't think it's appropriate. And this goes back to the Hawk too, because the, the Hawk that I think of is the Parker Street Hawk, which is right off a roundabout. And that is an extremely dangerous crossing. Like very few people know how to use that. I'd almost rather have the flashing beacons there because then it'd get people's attention more than the Hawk, I think. I don't know. But it does, so when you combine a roundabout with a crossing like this on a busy street, it may be one of the few examples that I've ever seen where I wouldn't be favorite, in favor of roundabout. I do love roundabouts, so I think they're fantastic in most situations, but this one may not be the one.
The other, the other problem with the roundabout here is that traffic routinely backs up way past this area. So you'd have, the roundabout would be clogged with cars. And so people couldn't get out of Port Plaza, you know, it's, I think the signal works better there.
I think a signal is the right solution for this spot.
Yeah, I agree. Let's get him to hyper-focus on the signal.
I, I think we stay underground on a signal. I think it, it's not. I, I think it's almost obvious. I've heard, I actually did listen to a couple of the meetings and you just, it just seems obvious to almost everyone who thinks about it for a moment, that the, the signal is the right solution.
It's a question of who pays for it in the end.
Right, but.
That's.
But there's, and if you're looking for a nexus to the, the impact of the project, it's got to be in, you know, the pedestrian situation and the, and the, in that, and not creating a worse situation than what exists currently, which I think that drawing actually does.
It does. You know, maybe even think of it from the residents' point of view down the road. You know, these people that are coming into the plaza are going to find out very quickly without a signal, how challenging it is and how annoying that is to get to their property. So what's going to happen is they're going to find an alternative way to get there and it's going to be up towards McDonald's entrance there. And that's going to, you know, beef up the traffic in that region. So I think it has these ancillary effects that, that maybe, I don't know if traffic control or studies are looking at it. But I just, I think we all agree that traffic signal would be the way to go.
Agreed.
Agree.
Yeah, I agree. Absolutely.
Yes.
That should be a tweak to Rick's earlier question. That should be a tweak to this paragraph here, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So item B should be turned around, emphasizing signalization.
Was there anything else that anybody wanted to call out? And Rick, I don't know if you were done with the other notations.
Nope, that's all.
Okay. So if we can make these couple of edits. I think, Andy, I can, I can come over tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll touch base tomorrow morning if that's all right.
Do we, do we need to have a vote on this?
Um, yeah, I guess I would suggest this is, you know, best practice, normal typical protocol is just a, a motion to authorize the chair to submit the letter as amended to the ZBA.
So could I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, we're all on screen, so I guess I need to do roll call. Brian Belcom?
Yes.
Alden Clark?
Yes.
Charlie Palmosano?
Yes.
Jamie Pennington?
Yes.
Rick Tinter?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Jack and Matt, I know you're supportive of this, but we don't need your votes on this one, so. So, okay, so with that, we will put this in a final form and I'll try to get over to sign it tomorrow, Andy.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I'll touch base with you, if you need me to be around for any reason, maybe I want to just touch base with you because I might be bouncing into a meeting at one point, so.
I, I do have one question about, and Charlie, I think you, you made mention of this. What's going on across the street?
I, I thought we had some information that, Andy, who's the guy that owns the property again?
Minko, the same company that did the 40R projects on one and three Boston Way and the, the one that's been permitted thus far, has land here and is expressed interest in doing something similar here. Not, I think if that size, obviously, but, but something, you know, more akin to what's happening at Boston Way. And so you may see something like that coming along. And that's where there's been this discussion of, you know, perhaps, you know, we have ice cream there today, but like more pedestrians going back and forth here, so.
Interesting. Okay.
The Hyman's Building is probably going to become something different too, as they're closing.
Yeah.
Right.
Eventually, it'll all be.
That whole strip retail thing, you know, it's, if, if you think about it, you know, in terms of our long-term planning study, uh, what you don't want is strip retail with a big parking field in front of it. That's, that's not the urban diagram that we're all hoping for, which, which kind of means that strip retail is, is not in a good place.
Right.
Generally, it, it, you, you almost want to rebuild that closer to that center drive aisle and have some convenience parking and then, and then maybe there's a parking field behind it somehow. So you've kind of flipped the whole diagram in there. But I think long-term, that's, that, that particular collection of, of strip retail is not very well positioned to, to fit into a, a future plan.
Agreed.
Okay. On, on the minutes, I know, Rick, you, you had a comment. I, I have not had the time to look at the, the October 1st minutes yet. So I'm going to suggest that we table all of this and we'll circle back the next meeting and try to get as much of this out of the way as we can.
Yeah, I would, I would like to ask for another cut at the August 20th minutes before it comes to us for a vote. I, as I said in an email this afternoon to Andy and Bob, I got through five pages and I just had so many questions. Couldn't figure out what things meant and everything like that. So it really needs to be. These artists, the August 20th are not done by Caitlin and they were, they were not up to our norm.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Are those the ones that Rachel Cusick did or are those? Okay, okay.
Yep. So those, those, they're really, if, if you look at the notes that I sent you on the first five pages, you'll see what I mean. I just gave up after five pages. There are 19 pages.
Okay, thank you.
Contrary, August, October, I know you're not ready for them yet, Bob, but I want to commend Caitlin on the October 1st ones. They're great.
You. I'm, I'm on the other side. Also, just a quick thing. Charlie, you didn't get the October 1st minutes because your email's bouncing back for me. Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I was just saying, Charlie, your email bounced back, so if I can get updated email, I can send those to you.
Do you want me to email or just tell you right now?
You can just email me.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Um, Rick, we'll follow up on that. Sorry. We'll follow up with Rachel and circle back.
Okay, any other updates, Andy?
Uh, my only question is, I just want to confirm. So as you can imagine, the consultant, Gamble Associates, David Gamble, who's providing some guidance to the ZBA and the sort of design review piece, which you may be interested in following with us. And the ZBA hearing on the 28th, he's going to be working with us on the rezoning work. So my question here was just if folks feel comfortable with it, I'd like to just do a kickoff sort of discussion with a smaller group that we had talked about as sort of a subcommittee before. That allows a little bit more efficiency with a daytime meeting with the consultant. But then sort of working with the chair in the coming weeks to sort of establish what is the regular meeting date of the planning board, the full board, in which the consultant is there and we've got some stuff to look at with them. So just wanted to make sure we're on the same page and okay with the idea of the smaller group meeting initially with a consultant, you know, just to kind of get things going efficiently, you know, and all that. So I will circle back with the scope of work and contract and so forth with that group if that works. I just wanted to make sure everybody's still copacetic, so to speak, with a smaller group being sort of a core, you know, folks who have a little bit more time, they can devote to this sort of between meetings, so.
That was Jamie and, and Brian and, and my, correct?
Yeah.
It's good.
Are you guys still available to do that?
Yes.
Jamie and I could, okay. Very happy that we're finally getting going with this.
Yeah, I'm glad we finally got a grant back from the state. It was like a whole fiscal year that they just kind of jumped over and so, anyway.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then I think we can adjourn. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Brian Belcom?
Yes.
Alden Clark?
Yes.
Charlie Palmosano?
Yes.
Jamie Pennington?
Yes.
Rick Tinter?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, meetings adjourned. Thank you very much.
Night, folks. Thank you.
Night, everybody.